Crest County Commissioner meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is September 19th. It is nine o'clock a.m. We will go through the roll calls, but I just want to, for the record, say that we have Mr. Commissioner Kanda on the speakerphone. Jackie, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, everybody.
How are you?
Good, here. Yes, I am good.
Good, so you're, I'm trying to get the volume up. It looks like we're up all the way. Are you in Virginia?
Yep, we're in Virginia, partial to Virginia, right outside of Washington D.C.
Okay, well, you may have to speak up a little. I've got the volume turned up as far as I can get it. We can hear you, but not extremely well.
All right, yes, yes, that's better.
Yeah, that's better, yes, thank you. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am. Amendments to the agenda. Mr. Kanda.
Done here.
Okay.
Commissioner Prince.
Nor do I. Audience introductions.
Renegati Admin to the Board.
Jackie Bures for Sentinel.
John Farr, Whitmore.
Bruce Farr, Whitmore.
Paul and Bray, Whitmore.
Julie, Paul and Whitmore.
Okay, welcome, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here. Approval of the minutes of August 31, September 4, and September 5.
I will acquiesce then.
Okay.
I'll second that.
They moved and seconded to accept the minutes from August 31, 9:04 and 9:05. Discussion?
I didn't have any corrections.
Okay, good. Hearing no further discussion, we'll approve. We'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close name, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for doing that. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, anything for the good of the order?
Not really. As you know, maybe the audience doesn't know, but I was on vacation from the end of the last meeting till yesterday, and I did see some email comments with several committees. I could have brought a slideshow of the Talooa Roos and the monkey farm, but I felt it probably didn't fit, so.
Well, the monkey thing might have.
Pretty interesting. I tell you what, it was pretty fun. So, I don't have anything but thank you for this.
Commissioner Kanda, would you like to proceed, or?
Yeah, you have just a couple of points I'll give real quick. We did the, and they're the, the point of view, the fuel terminal work, handle both JAA and the tab gas, and we did it in time to get the refund for the, our old, they did allow us to keep the old one, they just need the mother board out, and I mentioned that before. That has occurred. Also, I've worked with the engineering firm, Armstrong, on free, doing the task orders so that it can be executed in elements for items. And I've got that almost complete. I'm going to send it to you on the day, and you can take a look at it. And if we don't see, and I'll also give it to Clint as well. If there are no issues, I will, we can execute if we can find it, or we can just, if we find a chance, we'd rather. And then, and then they are ready to fill us for a couple things they've already done, and then they're going to execute the staking. Good news on the staking for the grading of the verb. It went from $25,000 down to $9,500.
Wow.
Got the actual work, look at what the actual job will be, rather than betting on what they thought it might be. That helps to work that out.
Bill, what was the cubic yardage? Did you get that figure?
Yeah, I've got it. And I'll have one, I don't have it, but you hear, not too bad. That sort of rolls into a discussion we'll have later, with when we want to get that greater sort area, and I know we're going to discuss it a bit on the Herman Bridge, you should have the other thing, and I've worked with Gary on two issues. One was the Herman Bridge schedule. We'll wait until we get to that, because then the best debatement issue that we had back, I think, the ninth of September, whenever our, one of our last meeting, or the first, I think. And I do have a workup on that, as part of the answers for our citizens that were concerned, as well as copy the minutes that we just approved off the table later. And then, I think, if we're with Cheryl Trent on the strategic plan, we'll get in some of those details, what's happening on that, and we can do that on our business.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I've got right now.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's see, I guess we need an update kind of since our last VOCC meeting. September the 5th, I did attend the Tourism Meeting, Tourism Board, as I did on September 11th. They are meeting frequently because we're trying to get up and running with a new board, working on budget and that kind of thing. September the 11th, I also attended the Republican Central Committee Meeting in the Annex. September the 12th, we had a Justice Center Committee Meeting in the Commissioner's Room. On the 13th, I went up to slide in and sat in on the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District as an ex-official member of that board. The Republican Committee had a community luncheon on the 15th. I attended that. Tourism Board had another workshop on the 17th, so I sat in on that as well. And then, on the 17th in the afternoon, I met with the members of the Fair Board, Christie Doon from Dola and Jeff Woods from the University of Colorado at Denver, as an architect, and we met to discuss the strategic plan and long-range goals for the fairgrounds. And so, that's a process that's just now starting, and I'll keep the board apprised of what is going on there. They're looking at, trying to do something, maybe work in collaboration with the Saddle Club, maybe, ideally, they'd love to see a new event community center out there. So, that's kind of where I've been, what I've been doing, so. Any other Commissioner Items to be brought forward?
Yeah, he reminded me, I didn't do that tourism meeting, the ultimate workshop was good. Glad to see, and happy to see that we've got good applicants and people that are wanting to join that board. We'll be working that later, in another week. We can talk more about that, and we can all go, we've got, I've learned, as a result of that, there is some confusion in the world about the brand that's been going around. And I'm not sure, it was, it wasn't, it's not a county backers' boxers' brand, it's a marketing brand that's presented. Or confusion that I see is who has the rights to that brand, and who are they representing? You know, counties, it's different, because the county's never stood up, got behind it, as a county. So, we can discuss that at some point down the road when we educate.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. I've had several people contact me after the article in the paper come out. And I guess, while we're in this discussion, and I think it probably does need to be an agenda item, if we haven't already got it on another agenda, I can't remember, I'm looking at Brendan's, see if I have to put that on or not, but we probably need to put that on there so we can have a more formal discussion. But Jay, I'd like your take on this brand. Obviously, the company came and did a presentation to the board. How, when, what was your takeaway about the ownership of that?
Well, I'm very mixed on this. My thought was that the ownership itself was by CART, and the Tourism Board itself was the owner of the brand. So, when they said to me, when I asked them, "What do you think?", they said, "Well, we're just going to make our own decision." My concern was, this is a brand for the entire county. I don't think they should be vested with that total decision. So, I think there needs to be more discussion in terms of who will do the final approval, and what the words will say on it. I think the brand is something that needs to be done, but I have a problem with an adjunct of the county making the determination of the entire brand for the county. That's my concern.
Yeah, I-
That's exactly my concern, although I think we do need to discuss that, because maybe we ought to have Clint take a look at who has the copyright, who owns it.
Yeah, I, I've got, I'm all over the board with this thing. Obviously, I wasn't a big fan of the brand, that's not the point, whether I'm in favor or not, that's, we're talking about a different thing, and that is, who has responsibility for it, who owns it, who has a copyright to it, so on and so forth. As I understand it, and I have requested and have yet to receive a copy of that Blueprint 2.0 grant, my understanding is that was a service grant, not a dollars grant. I believe, according to Mr. Bogel, that the Economic Development Company, Tourism, CART, and there was a fourth entity.
Chamber.
The Chamber, thank you. Yeah, were involved in putting that all together. Now, does that mean they jointly own the brand? I don't know. I know Greg Smith apparently has taken the lead on disseminating information on the proper use of the brand and so on and so forth, but I don't know that that means he has ownership of it. I don't know that. So, I think you're right, Bill. I think maybe we can, if we can get a copy of the 2.0 grant, let Clint look at that. I think it's being severely misrepresented as a brand for the county. I don't believe the county commissioners have adopted that as a brand. There's been some angst about calling it the Custer County Logo. That certainly, for a lot of people, would think that it was a Custer County government-backed logo. That is not the case. I don't think there's-
Let me shine in there, just for legal reasons. We use, okay, I represent the citizens of the county, and as that, we need to make sure that the citizens of the county are behind and support things and laws, and we do. And so, this is a good example of one that we, if we're going to endorse it, as the county has to represent the interest of the county people. But we do need to have more discussion, and we've got to iron out, I think, exactly what we've been thinking. Let Clint look at it, and we'll have more discussion.
Right, okay. Yeah, I will. It almost bleeds over into another discussion we'll have later on when we get to an agenda item concerning the strategic plan as well. So, yeah, I think somewhere along the line, I think we need to clear up blurred lines, in my opinion, in the world I live in, because I'm just not sure, so.
My concern is, I don't think any function of the county should have a right to dictate how the county is going to adhere to what they want. They represent us, and we need to have the final say, I think it's at this table, but it's here on the Hill. I think we have the final say as to, yes, we adopt it, or no, we don't. Now, I think it's different than if, like, the Saddle Club puts out a poster with a horse person or something. That's a whole different thing.
Right.
Because that's not representing the county.
Right.
This is the county, and I think Bill is 100 percent correct. We need to represent what the people want, not what these four groups are trying to.
Good, okay. Brenda, would you, can you put that on the agenda for our next meeting? I don't know that it's necessarily an action item, but certainly we can have some further discussion, and maybe bring in some of the people involved in that.
That's a key question to me, if you don't mind me just chipping one more second.
No, go ahead.
Do we even have the authority to say to them, "We, as the county commissioners, reject your use of it as the county logo"? Do we have that authority? And that's what I don't know.
Right, yeah, I was, I've got a problem with one word that you said there, and that's "county logo". I don't think we have any say-so if this company, this private company wants to use that as a logo. But if they're going to represent us as a county-
That's my point.
Then, I think there's the-
It's Custer County.
Yeah, there's the bingo right there.
That's exactly my position, too. I've done well research, and we talked about it next meeting, but I've talked to a lot of people, which has others, and I believe we do have authority for, like, the Tourism Board, for sure.
Right.
We don't go over the other agency, but if they're going to borrow it, we're going to contribute it, and then county courts. And we have control over them, so if they're going to try to do that in the group, they better get buy-in from us, which is really a lot of money.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement that we're not just going to roll over and say, "Do what you think is right". We will have say in this, and we'll move forward with it, so we can have that discussion when the time comes.
Yeah, I had a pretty heated conversation with a citizen about this, and I had to tell that person, this may not be any different than the name Custer County Realty, or some other thing that has Custer County, but I think it's a perception that this is a county government deal.
They're in the blood.
Yeah, so maybe we can clear that up. We'll put that on the agenda for the 28th, and address that appropriately at that time. Any other Commissioner Items? Thank you, Commissioner Kanda. Attorney Items? Before you start, sir, please forgive my interruption.
I haven't started yet.
Wonderful, wonderful bowler tie you're wearing today.
All right, a 30-second commercial for this-
Yes, go ahead.
A childhood friend of mine, we've been friends for nearly 70 years. His son makes these. This is made out of two different kinds of hardwood. He did his design for me. Since I'm Vice President of Dark Skies, I asked for a design of the Milky Way, and that's what he put on there for me. But if anybody else is interested in having a custom-made bowler tie, I would be happy to give you this card.
Very good.
Okay, so thank you for that.
From sitting over here, Commissioner Kanda, it almost looks like a heart, because we have a big-hearted attorney, and I would guess those are pieces of turquoise embedded in the wood, so very nice, and-
I bet it looked really good. I'll have to see it again.
Yeah, he may have to wear that again.
Once I've got it under this button-down collar, I'm never going to take it off. Just wash the shirt this way.
Commissioner Prince said I could hold the phone up, and you could look at it.
All right.
Yeah, all right, sir, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Just very briefly, since we were talking about this brand and the controversy about it, let me say a couple of things on that. There was a public meeting on August 29 to formally introduce this brand, marketing brand, to the citizens. It was, unfortunately, it was very poorly attended. A lot of things were explained at that meeting, and the marketing brand, the way it was represented, is owned actually by Custer County Economic Development, and-
Corporation.
Corporation, yes, a private corporation, not a county-controlled entity at all. It's a marketing brand, it's being confused with the county logo, or county seal. The seal for the county government is not anywhere, not the same thing at all. The marketing brand, by definition, for the Tourism Board, is something that is not even used within the county. It has to be used outside the county to try to draw tourism, tourists here, and that's the purpose of it. So, nobody in the county is going to be using it for local purposes, that's, and that's why I have Greg Smith handling, you know, who's authorized to use it, and the conditions and everything, but, I mean, that can be further explained. We're going to need to have Charles Bogel and Wilson Jarvis, Wilson is the president.
We need to, just, I have a good point, Clint, but I still believe that we're licensed somebody to put things outside the county and bring people in, and we ought to be proud and respect and actually own that marketing brand, if it's representing and came from an organization that works for us, the Tourism Board, so we can discuss the legality.
Yeah, I didn't want to go beyond what I just, the basics, that was the intent, though, is how it was arrived at, and I frankly think it would be worthwhile to have Wilson Jarvis and Charles Bogel do a, sort of, a summary of what they presented at that meeting on August 29 to answer some of these questions. So, other Attorney Items, I also attended the Justice Center Meeting, the Committee Meeting, last week. I always talk to Jackie Hobbie, seems like almost every day, about various issues, and if not, I call her and say, "Hey, what's going on?" I meet my daily Jackie Fix. We had that executive session a couple of weeks ago, and I reported about this individual and the problems we've been having. There are almost constant daily things that are going on there, that either emails that I receive, that the sheriff receives, the undersheriff receives, and so far, even though this individual keeps threatening to file various kinds of complaints, nothing has been filed, so we'll see where that goes. Other than that, I'm pleased to report that I'm doing such an outstanding job as the county attorney, that there are no legal issues, that, so everything's running on autopilot.
That being said, then-
But you still need me.
Oh, I, that's where I was going, right off the bat. Is it something you think-
That he's on the job.
Yeah, if it's going so smooth, maybe Bill or I could handle it. I'm going to leave Jay out of it, because he's an attorney, so that's not fair, but we know he can handle it, so. Yeah, if you want Bill or I to take over the legal deals for the county, I'm sure that would have its own side.
I see storm clouds on the horizon.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate your report. Administrative Assistant Item?
I just want to mention, Meredith Nichols sent me an email asking about an airport MOU, and she said she thought it was with Clint. Do you know anything about that?
Well, there was one a long time ago I looked at and reviewed, but I, is she talking about something new? I don't know about anything new at all.
I really don't know, and I asked her to clarify, because she didn't really say what it was about, so I didn't know. If you had anything that you were looking at currently, and if not, then-
I don't know unless she's talking about some kind of a MOU with Part 6, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
And I don't know what OEM would have to do with that, so.
That's right, it's OEM, so I have no idea.
I think, maybe, we'll have to look into that, because the only thing that we're revolting to is the fact that we got JAA out there, maybe the helicopter drove something out with them. I don't know what's going to happen.
I know there was some discussion about in emergency situations, or an incident command situation, or whatever, so maybe that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, and I hadn't seen anything.
But we can follow up on that a little bit. But as far as we know, Clint, you have not, you've not seen anything, nobody's contacted you, okay? All right, good. Okay, anything else, ma'am?
Oh, that's it.
All right, thank you. Public comment. How are we doing? Good? Okay. This is not on the agenda, so I'm just going to throw this out here. You're now minus one urinal in the men's restroom up the steps.
Yay!
I was going to glue in a fitting today, but I was sent down here with the wrong fitting, which we knew there was a question of whether or not it was going to fit. It doesn't, so don't despair. We temporarily got the hole plugged up, but I was going to glue a plastic PVC fitting in there today, but it's not the right one. We knew it wasn't the right one, we were hoping it would be close, and we could make it work. I don't believe that's going to happen, so I'm pleased. I didn't know that that FRP board went behind that urinal. I figured we were going to have to patch in for that. That's not the case. They put the FRP board in, then hung the urinal, so alls we've got to do is put a cap over it, and we're good to go. Good?
Good.
That's my public comment, sorry, it's really not for me. Yes, ma'am?
You may want to talk to Meredith and see if there's a way to plug in a speaker for that.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, that that phone is not adequate. We tried going the cheap route.
Just something that has an "out", Jack, and you can put a little speaker on it, if that has one.
Yeah, I don't-
Hold on, Bill, I've got you turned upside down.
I can feel it.
Maybe if we turn the phone around towards the audience, the audience could hear.
I thought that, too, but the speaker's right there, I don't know. Does it have an "out" jack phone?
No, not that I can find.
Yeah, I mean, when we looked at this, we could have bought, like, a speaker phone that's meant for, you know, like, teleconferencing, but they're like, a couple hundred bucks. So, we're like, well-
It's worth a couple hundred bucks, because at least one of them will be in and out of these.
I agree.
Can't help but ask many meetings.
We're sitting on top of you, and I'm having trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we may, good point, we may delve into that, so. Other public comments?
I don't think turning it on top of that.
The blacktop in the front of our building looks great, and I'd like hats off to Gary and his group.
Yeah, I was at this morning, yeah, they did blacktop the front of the community building, or Commissioner Kanda, sorry.
Yeah, great, I wish I could-
Do you know that they damaged the concrete when they did that, out in front of the door, out there?
No.
The concrete is damaged, I was to take a look at it.
Sidewalk.
Yes, the sidewalk, to the building.
All right, we'll look at that. Mrs. Farr indicated that they may have damaged the sidewalk in front of the building when they were doing the asphalt. I'm assuming they hooked it with a blade, corner of a blade, or, I don't think they brought a roller down, but if they did, they may have run the roller up on it, so.
Something's happened.
Thank you. Yeah, so we will look at that, thank you. I did not, I parked over here, so I didn't notice it was on this corner.
Grabbing credit my car.
Okay, all right, we'll look at that, thank you. Other public comments? Maybe we'll move on, thank you. Staff Report Planning and Zoning, apparently has finally agreed to meet with the Commissioner. Come forward, man, the floor is yours. Commissioner Kanda, I got to tell you, I forgot my gavel, so I'm using a wooden spoon today.
Cheers.
Nice.
Sorry. What's that, not your one? Six, no, sit down there by the attorney.
I know, he's the only nice one.
Oh, I didn't mean you, I meant-
He's the only attorney we've got, of course, he's nice.
Oh, he's in the final round, very good. Let me just peruse the basic format.
So, this is all, this is Bill's. I'm going to give it to Brenda to give to Bill, please. Now, it's actually cleaned up in a manner where we can handle it in the zoning office. It's not in three different programs. Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, very well done, thank you.
And the master plan was actually done in columns, which was hard to, you know, and that was in an old program, and Brenda cleaned that up also, so.
And I see we've got the enactment clause in there, so this is done.
Done.
Finished.
Till next year.
Seems like we're doing one every year.
Hey, just a quick question, Jackie, you mentioned the format, this is a format question. So, what is this, to be honest now, Brenda, if it's in one Word document, or what is he worked with in the future of upgrades and changes?
Yeah, it's Word.
Yeah, it's just a Word document.
I don't know, it's a Word document, I don't know, a burden of the word, but-
Ten, I think.
Ten.
Or, 2016.
Was it three?
Word 2016, yeah.
So, it's in Microsoft Word where we can all use it.
Did you get that, Bill?
Yeah, that's right.
All right.
Yeah, that's great. Then when you send it out, you can always convert it to a PDF file, so that it can change and separate the master copy and then order it again.
Good, great, perfect. How many copies were printed?
Uh, I only printed twenty-seven because I gotta give some to all my planning commission and the board of zoning adjustment. I didn't mean to call them mine. It's just a habit.
Yeah, V.
V, and so they all get a copy, and then we only make like one or two copies for the office. They're not a popular item.
Good.
Not like the septic rigs, those go out of our office. So, the first thing I have on my agenda is an ongoing issue that it seems like I've been working with the Department of Public Health on for, it seems like, years. And what happens is, years ago, they decided to start charging people for their tires. Get new tires, you have to pay a disposal fee if you take them to the dump. And the whole thing was, is that they were gonna help us with our tire piles in the counties. And yes, we have hardly any tires sitting on vacant property like Leadville. Leadville was just a month-long project. And so, when they have a complaint, and you can do this online, then they call the zoning office, and you gotta go look at the tires. Okay, so you can use tires for a windbreak, uh, earth and stuff, but you cannot just stack your tires. So, out on Ferris Drive, I mean Fowler. You go to Ferris to get to Fowler. We have had this issue, but it's become very complicated. The issue is, is that this gentleman has over two hundred plus tires, plus a couple trailers. CDPHE has actually sent a letter for me to get signed by the property owner, and they have agreed to do a cleanup this spring of two thousand and nineteen, which is not that far away.
The letter is the letter granting access to the property.
Correct. And it's, and usually, CDPHE sends this letter to the landowner. I have a missing landowner. Okay, now, this is where it gets really strange. He has not paid his taxes on this property, and it went up for a tax sale. When the gentleman or person that bought this property seen what he had just bought, he does not pick up the tax certificate, but he keeps paying on the property. Well, legally, it's not his, and even if it, I think you have so many years to wait after you get a tax cert from the county before you can do anything with the property. So, I'm in the process trying to hunt down this property owner, and if I'd have been earlier, but I have the sheriff's department there looking for him, and last thing I heard was that he has a motor home and he's skipping from RV part to RV part. I would like to have permission to put this on Facebook.
A request to see if we can come up with his address?
Uh-huh, because I find that people will always have access to the internet and Facebook. Would that be appropriate for me to do?
So, your request on Facebook would be to what?
Put his name and tell him that I need him.
Request information about him or to have him contact you or something? Nothing legal, you're just trying to get a hold of him?
Does he have a mailing address? No mailing address at all?
No.
What do you think, Clint?
I don't see any problem, as long as there's no suggestion he's done anything illegal, just strictly trying to contact him to discuss a matter.
Property title issues or whatever. Well, wouldn't be a title issue, actually. It's just, we're trying to get a hold of an address so we can send him or request him to sign a letter of access for CDPHE.
Jackie, does he know why? Have you ever, it's not like they're trying to tell him or do anything or give me money, and they're trying to help clean it up. Does he know why?
He doesn't even know I'm looking for him.
Okay, that's why I thought it was kind of, uh, imagine to let somebody know. I can't imagine volunteering to even talk to him, any turd.
You can't imagine him volunteering to talk to me?
I'd lie, you know, why did he skip?
Why did he skip? He skipped a long time ago. We're talking fifteen years ago.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh, he used to have a job at a local filling station, and I went there too, and wanted, and put the word out. But I guess he comes to Custer County every once in a while in his motor home and parks it in hardscrabble.
Yeah, if Attorney Smith doesn't have an issue with it, I, I asked Jackie, would she be doing this as formally, this request on Facebook as a planning and zoning department? Do you see an issue with that, or...
No, that's how it should be, but just very, very neutral as far, just wants to locate him, to talk to him, and that's it. Don't say what it's about or anything else.
Yeah, I'll send you what I'm gonna say.
In the meantime, I got a question. If CDPHE is gonna pay for all this, can we haul all the other tires in the county dump?
Eight hundred instead of two hundred.
Yeah.
Yes, start, start going down there.
So, I think, uh, Jackie, we're probably okay as a commissioner, uh, as a commission as consent. Bill, you okay?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it's sort of easy. Kids, uh, advertise a voluntary, voluntary, bring your pile, your tires to a pile, so they can pick them up, because I'd like to throw some planning away.
Well, I would guess CDPHE is gonna wanna deal just with that property.
They are, and it has to be what they call a heritage pile, which means that it's tires that have been there for quite a while, Bill. And we can find the date on your tires with your fingerprints.
Commissioner Candace, or Commissioner Prince, you okay with consent here?
I'm fine with it. Clint's okay with it. I'd just be curious as to what page do you use? Use the sheriff's page or...
I was gonna use the community page.
Community.
Uh, whose account?
My account.
Your personal one.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
We do have on the sheriff's page.
Phil's here.
It might look like, and maybe something that figures going on.
Yeah, 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 we, not my page, or our page.
See, he doesn't share well.
Because it doesn't. You're right, then. Has the illusion that, yeah.
No, he's got a bad reputation. We will not be putting it on his page.
Can, can we move on to the document you sent us, then? If, I was a little unclear about the ethics thing, the cost of the certified letter. I thought that was still in connection with the tire issue. It's not.
Okay, so, uh, the next item is the planning commission and the board of zoning adjustment and associate members had a workshop with the county attorney, and enclosed is the code of ethics policy. It's basically taken off the code of ethics policy for the town of West Cliff, and we removed the items that did not pertain, and Mr. Smith has looked at it. And I would like to present that because the planning commission and the board of zoning adjustment and associate members had attended that meeting, and if it's all right, do you guys have see a problem with that code of ethics?
I reviewed it. I do not. I would move that we authorize Mrs. Hobbie to disseminate that to her board's appropriate board.
Seconded.
Been moving the second to authorize or to approve the code of ethics policy for the planning commission, the board of zoning adjustment, and associate members. Discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Just one comment. I wrote this policy for West Cliff, although I think since you altered it and since it's not a controversial thing, I don't feel it would be a conflict of interest to be voted on.
I agree, sir.
I, I see it was copyrighted.
No, you're right. The point we're taking is to make changes, so...
She made some changes. It's not controversial, but I did want it on the record that I was involved in this previously.
Yeah, I attended that meeting when Attorney Smith met with planning and zoning, and I think it was well received, and I don't believe this is gonna be an issue. Do you exactly remember this?
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay, further discussion? Since this is an action item, I'll allow a public opinion, a public comment, if there are any.
Will it be up on the website?
No.
I can't be.
Yeah. Under the P and Z, yeah. Good, good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comment? Here and done, we'll proceed to vote, and unless it's further discussion, I'm sorry, I kinda jumped again. Commissioner Candace?
No, we're good to go.
Okay. All in favor of approving the code of ethics for planning commission, board of zoning adjustment, and associate members, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carries. We would ask that contact Big Burney and see about proposing that on the county website.
Okay, all right. This is not on the agenda, but it's under a planning commission.
Do you mind if I interrupt you just one second before we get off this? Could you mind?
Of course not.
At some point, I would like this discussion to say that not only planning and zoning, but we ought to have an ethics rule for everybody.
No, I agree, because I got another one.
And before you lead that, is this the certified mail thing? I'm trying to get to the context of that.
No, just wait.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I had a planning commission member resign. Chris Nordike sent an email after I had sent this report. The way that the planning commission does is we look at our associate members first, and the longest associate member, we do it by that way.
Longest.
So, we would go to the longest member. If they say yes, then we're, we're good to go. If they say no, then we go the next one. That's how we do it. And if, if everyone would, you know, we can stop with the first yes, but if everyone says no, they don't have a choice, then we'll put out their names in a hat.
Okay.
And so, I will be replacing, I, I will, you know, when I say aye, I really mean we.
We understand.
Okay. Chris Nordike, and we'll probably do that at the meeting on October 2nd, and we'll get to that at the very end. Okay, here's my issue. Certified mail is six dollars and seventy cents. I send out a non-certified and a certified. So, now we're up to seven seventeen for when someone messes up. You do not have to pick up a certified letter. That's how come we have one that says non, is non-certified. But then they usually ignore me. Not usually, sometimes. Then it goes over to our county attorney, and he sends him a letter, and it is certified. So, now we've got over fifteen dollars in this one person for them, I would like to be able to say, on the people that have violated the rules of the zoning or whatever, septic or whatever, be able to put on that form, because we have a post-construction, if they have to pay for the certificates too. It's not fair that, and I don't, it doesn't come out of my budget, but postage doesn't come out of my budget. I should have kept my mouth shut.
We fixed that. Yeah, that will be taken care of, of course.
So, but see, you're getting, some people are getting two certified letters. That's fifteen dollars that, do you agree with that, if I put it on there, that...
You're talking about on their original application when they sign, sign off. It's a statement of saying, if, in the event it becomes necessary for me to receive a certified letter, I will be responsible for that.
I don't know if I wanna put it on the application or if I put it on the nasty gram.
Has to be on the application, I think.
Well, a lot of them don't have, submitted an application, that's the problem.
That's how come they're getting, so it has to be on the nasty gram.
I think it needs to be a policy issue, not just a, a concurrence. I think it should
be voted on as a commissioner item and expenses.
Resolution, or...
Yeah, I would think.
I need to think about how to word it, too, because I think maybe it's policy, if you cause a, an extra, it's like court meeting.
Well, we do it when we do special use permits and stuff. That is basically, like, if you do a special use permit and your special use permit requires over so many letters, like, let's say that mine required five, but yours required fifteen, then you have to pay the extra.
I think.
And I think that's basically already in the zoning rigs. I'd have to look, it's under a special use permit. But like the county attorney just got to saying, these certified letters are for people that haven't even got a application yet, so they'll never see it. But I'd like to put it on their nasty gram.
Okay, yeah, let's hammer the details of that out, the wording and so on and so forth, and we can put that on there.
And I think it should be referred to, not as a fee, but as costs, like court costs or...
Yeah, I would, I was gonna make the same comment that Clint just did, because it's not just posted, if for some reason we have outside legal fees or other fees that are associated with them coming back into compliance that are, that are...
Correct, and then sometimes you're going out twice or three times to a site to make sure that they've done what they said they did.
And here's, and in that, I would say, we probably ought to have a policy also on, we charge that person X cents or dollars, whatever, per mile there and back, so that, what I'm trying to, I want some consistency as well, because I don't want someone to go, you're just picking on me. But if we have a policy that says, if we have to come out and expect because you, you have done something inappropriate, it's seventy percent of mine, but whatever number you come up with each way, that kind of thing, just so we have it written down.
And I think that's great, because when your septic system fails, the next trip charge is seventy-five dollars.
I think that's common.
Uh, the mechanics of it, if, what are we gonna do about enforcement and that kind of thing? We'll have to look at that, so. I mean, if they didn't get a permit and they started a project, then you send them a, a letter and say, you know, you need to come in compliance. Are they going to do that? How many times is that they're gonna have to go out? Then what happens?
Uh, we have these little yellow place cards. Clint and I do, and he has signed them, and I take them to cease and desist or whatever. So, we got that one covered.
I don't think we're gonna put weight on anyone's house for seven dollars.
Then, I don't wanna jump the gun, I just never understood all of this. The FYI, all these numbers, those are cases that you've had posted involved in?
These are file numbers. This is how the property is...
Coated into your system?
Yes, and it comes from your tax. It's not, it's a parcel number, correct? Is that, or schedule number? What do you guys call it? Yeah. So, that's, if you look on your tax receipt, they'll have this number with two zeros in front of it, and that's how we file.
So, these numbers over here for our information, or examples of letters you've had to send out?
And at the top of all the letters, I wrote the numbers so that you didn't have to go to the bottom of the letter. See where it says at the top, one oh one, or whatever? Okay, all right. So, I only have one hundred thirty-six, three twenty-five. This is not resolved. Is that my TP? Oh, no, Sebastian Sassy.
Yeah, that was one hundred thirty-two.
So, enclosed under the one oh, one hundred thirty-six, three twenty-five is Sebastian Sassy. What has happened is he put a tough shed up and did not get a permit out in Centennial Ranch. Then, where he put the shed is not on his property.
I'm sorry.
It's just like, thank you letters.
Yeah. It became a...
Yeah, the current landowner has erected a tough shed on someone else's property, basically.
With, they didn't get a permit, and it's not on their property. So, we had some discussion back and forth, and I... So, we had some discussion back and forth, and as you can see, he still hasn't permitted it and he also hasn't moved it. So, I included all his emails. The property owner, I told him it was liable. I didn't have nothing to do with it. He's out of compliance with the zoning, but in order for the gentleman to get the shed moved and he's messing around and taking his time, that would be a liable suit. Because I'm covering the zoning part. But the gentleman has, this has been going on, gee, for a long time. Okay.
When you say liable, you mean liability, not libel?
Whatever.
Liability, right, yeah.
I could tell that was the wrong word, because our other attorney gave me that look like, well, she's not gonna take Clint's place. That's what she, that's what he was saying.
I thought it was liable, not slander.
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't know where that fits, but it's not a court.
There's a look. Okay, and then 101-59-650. This is a special use permit that the county okayed for the containers behind Shadow Ridge subdivision. The gentleman has come in and purchased some more container permits. Yes, he's painted them. He got a letter stating that he had to paint them better. Paint them, he didn't paint the front of them, because that's where you have all the walking mechanism. I have two issues. And one of them is just a personal issue. Is there any way, and I'm sure we can make any condition we want, but we're gonna have to start paying attention to how people paint. You can't take a gallon of paint and make two gallons of it. It's gotta be painted better. Don't you agree?
Well, the purpose of painting is to cover it up, so it's all uniform and, whatever the previous color was, it's covered up.
And it's bleeding through. But he still doesn't have a fence around it. And that was one of the conditions that was put on that. And so, he is in violation of his special use permit. Another thing is, I got a complaint that one of his U-Hauls came, is, came through Shadow Ridge. And on the lease, it states that there can't travel through that subdivision. But I don't know how we're gonna enforce that condition, because even if the Shadow Ridge residents got the license plate, what are we gonna do?
That's up to him. I mean, if somebody's continuing to violate the conditions of a special use permit, then he needs to terminate the lease agreement with that person.
Okay, so, I'm gonna work on this, because I think that he's, he's not fulfilling his SUP. And I know he had some health issues, but...
What was the number on that?
That is 101-59-650.
I was here. I spoke to Mike Connor of West Cliff. Is this the one that is a sign issue or road maintenance? Is some kind of, should I not break this up? Well, he asked me about it and I said, I was not a party to some agreement turned county into town. I asked him if it was either you or someone else.
Okay, so, here's the issue, and it's, there is a sign erected in the county right-of-way in, going to Lake Dues Road. Okay, so, Mike had just gotten back. So, Mike and I agreed that it was on our county access. And then I went out and told the site owner, and so he said he would remove it. In the meantime, Mike changed his mind and said it wasn't in the county access, that he had found these two pieces of paper. Okay, so, all it was is, that's a county road, but it goes through a little bit of West Cliff. All West Cliff did was annex in Shadow Ridge. So, if you sit on Shadow Ridge's driveway and you look down and see the sign that says Shadow Ridge, you'll see this other sign is too close to our right-of-way. So, I got the maps and Mike came in and he said he would look at it. But, we have, we agreed, we had to do an MOU with the town of West Cliff, saying that we would go ahead and maintain that part that went through West Cliff, since they annexed in, that Saddle Club is in West Cliff. Then you hit Oakley, Oak Disposal, then you hit Shadow Ridge. So, you'll see I have the, where you annexed, but it still doesn't mean that you can allow signs in our right-of-way. And that's a huge road. That's a 80-foot road.
A great to take down the sign, not an issue.
Correct. But Mike and I were going, take it down, keep it up. Take it down, keep it up.
I didn't mean to break that.
No. Okay, so that's over the sign, right?
Before we move on now, this fencing is part of this 59-650. Was it ever spelled out what kind of fencing that was, how high it had to be? Could you see through it, not see through it? Was there any of those details specified?
I do not recall at this point, but I do know it had to have fencing and it's not...
All the way around the perimeter of his property?
No, no, between the containers. That big span.
Okay, I've gone out there and looked at that property. I assumed the fencing was to go around the property, the perimeter. That's not the case. What do you mean between the containers?
Shoot, box it in so the cows can go in between them.
So, just around the container?
Uh-huh, not around the property.
Okay.
It's a 10-acre property and they're only using that much.
Right, so he just needs to fence the containers himself, put a gate on the south. Gotcha, thank you.
102-35-970, this is an ongoing situation. I, they need to install a septic.
Who's gonna make them do that? Who's gonna make them do that?
Well, here's the issue. You can't live in any dwelling without a flushing toilet, a sink, and so you gotta have a septic. So, they had been told this before. They just got another one. And I think that they got, I think that in their defense, they just thought, well, we don't have to.
Pretty good approach, saying.
I mean, you said they had a composting toilet. They thought that was sufficient.
Yeah. I also believe that, that was 102-35-970? So, they came in and they got the permit, and they thought they had a year. But here's the deal, when you're living in a structure and you didn't get, what, see, this is another fine example. They didn't get a permit for the structure, then we busted them, and then they got a permit for the structure, plus a permit for the septic system. So, then they just think, well, we got a year, but not on something like this when you're living in it.
Well, and it says that, "No person shall construct or maintain any dwelling or other occupied structure not equipped with adequate facilities for sanitary disposal of sewage." "Compost and toilet does not fit into that statement." Is that correct?
Correct.
I keep begging her, come on, let's go to court on something, but she always wants to give him another chance.
Well, you know, we're gonna wait for the big one.
Hence the three or four nasty grams.
Like a murder trial or something.
There might, you could end up in one if you keep messing around.
Well, do you want me to write a letter on this one, telling them that they have to do this now? They don't have a year to get it done?
Well, I did, September 5th, so we'll give them until October. And we better seize the action. Okay, the 156-309.
I would, yeah, I would have to go in and seek a temporary injunction per his, and then use the premises until they comply. I asked, she doesn't recall, John Neimer ever filed any individual actions on anyone.
56-309?
It's why you know the county attorney is ready to leap into it.
And then you better remember too, that the septic rigs have changed so dramatically in the last four years that what we were going off of didn't have, it was hilly-nilly. Thank God for the state. Most of these people though, they get a certified mail letter, but see, look at all these $7 sitting here. And it's not fair for, now, I'll eat the $7 if it's, if I'm mistaken, but I'm not mistaken.
So, 56-309, you're living in a garage?
Uh-huh, two homes on one parcel. So, I actually got a call from him and he said that his neighbors are not very happy with his situation, so he doesn't know if he'll go forward with it. And so then I told him that the bedroom and kitchen had to be removed. He can keep the bedroom, but he'd have to enlarge the septic.
So, that's the fourth bedroom on a three-bedroom septic for a while.
And then...
Jackie, was, was he renting it or is it a family?
He wasn't renting, I think, just allowing somebody to live there, right?
Yeah, there was no rent involved, it was a voluntary thing.
And then our Mr. Carpenter, Ed Lyons, said that he's got enough money for all the parts. And as soon as things get a little bit slower, he'll go out and finish the project. So, I think we're at least on track there.
What's our deadline now? I don't remember how much longer we gave them.
I don't think we did. And that's 34. That's 34-778.
Okay, Clint, I know you're the lawyer, but this statue is a nuisance statue.
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 Statue of things you're faking down to yourself.
Statue.
Oh, Bill! Our attorney is in fine form today.
He's correcting my English.
Must be that tie.
He hasn't got my dictionary yet. Okay, so... I thought we could use it to go to court.
Give me the okay, and then I have to, they're okay, but you can go to court anyway.
It's a nuisance.
What's a nuisance?
What case were you...
You're a nuisance.
Are you talking about a specific case there?
I have two of them. Would this nuisance statute, how does that do? Worked for my two properties, one out at the lake and one 255, because I'd rather walk through the landfill barefooted than their yard.
Well, that's what I was looking at, if we did have to take some action, it would be as a nuisance. So, there, that's what would apply, if we do have to take some formal action against both of those properties.
Okay, so, the one at Lake...
Statue, you're talking about?
Statue.
The building court, obviously.
No, it's a statue.
As a public health nuisance.
But, does that, does the trash have to leave the property or can we, because remember, Elizabeth can't do nothing unless the garbage leaves the property.
And it's not the trash, it's the, the rodents and everything else that are there that go beyond the property, that can carry disease and everything.
Okay, I'll get to the facts. Also, on a personal note, can I see some of the personal? Well, let me back up. I, well, it ties in with the personal thing. Can I just take five minutes for, to meet Jackie instead of zoning?
Sure, we'll allow two minutes.
I asked for five.
We'll get two.
Okay, I am having an issue with the highway. And you probably already heard my issues. Okay, I have gone and talked to Mr. Byerly. He basically said, correct me if I'm wrong, there has to be nine fatalities before they, the state will even consider...
Eight, eight.
Eight?
Typically, it's eight.
And how many fatalities do we have?
I don't know. I know we've had three, three in the last two and a half years.
Okay, so, we're talking about... We're talking about Schofield going west, and we're talking about Rosita Road. I mean east, sorry, dear. And so, I have talked to the fire department, to Roden Bridge. I got the statistics from the landfill. I need the statistics from Greenleaf. I'm gonna get the statistics from how many people live out there. But, one month, the landfill received 1,024 cars. This is just cars with trash coming down there. I don't know if it'll change. If you are even a rancher and you're coming west to east and you have a horse trailer, you're right there at Degrees Hill, you cannot get across that highway when the oncoming traffic's going 65 miles an hour. We're gonna have more fatalities. If you are a newcomer and you're coming down Rosita Road and you look, there's a little hill and there's a highway that, the highway, but you look and Degrees has tree-lined, and so you don't know no different, because you're not familiar. You think that road, that Rosita Road just goes on up in the mountains. I have looked everywhere in other counties. They have flashing light on their stop sign. Nowhere can, I, 65 miles an hour coming over that little hill. I would like a letter, because Roden Bridge is gonna write a letter, the fire department, I would like a letter and some support from the county commissioners to get the state highway up here, to explain to us, and this is my, this is what I'd like to see. I would like to see a flashing light on that stop sign. The county can't do it, because the state says they own that stop sign. And I would like to see the speed limit lowered. We go from 55, and then where does it raise? By the shooting club to 65?
Yeah, so does so.
Hey Jackie, for everybody, I don't know why we couldn't put a flashing light up before that stop sign or that, on both of them.
They make solar. But that's, that'll help with, and yeah, I'm taking this personally, as Emily. But, maybe the girl wouldn't have lived. But there's gonna be more Emilys.
Jackie, let me read an email that I sent to the transportation commissioner, okay? His name's Bill Tebow, Transportation Commissioner for CDOT. Hi, Bill, this is an email that I sent to him on September the 12th. As one of the county commissioners for Custer County, I want to touch base with you in regards to the intersection of Highway 69 South and Rosita Road. Obviously, we had a fatality at that intersection recently, and as expected, many of our citizens are asking if there's something could be done to make this intersection safer. I don't know if we can ask CDOT to consider lowering the speed limit coming from the south, installing some flashing lights, or cutting down the hill south of the intersection. However, I would like to have your thoughts on this matter. I know that there are, that there are some rumble strips embedded in the asphalt, and that certainly helps. I have not heard back from him. I, I expect that he will reply to some, in some form or another, but I just wanted you to know that I did send that email to him and waiting for reply.
Have you met him before?
I think he was at the meeting we had at CDOT.
I've known him for over 40 years. He was a lawyer.
Or a week and a half ago when they, they came up?
No, we met with him several months ago.
Do you know him personally?
When I told them they came to the, when they came to the county.
I'm talking about several months ago when the county commissioners... I'm talking about several months ago when the county commissioners met with CDOT.
They come about once a year and make a report what their plans are.
I didn't, I didn't remember him being there.
Okay, I, I can't say I know him, I assumed he was there. Go ahead, Commissioner Kenda.
No, I was just agreeing, that's been quite a while ago. We sat in the meeting to discuss this in the CTI meetings that we've been in before as well. And it does take a lot of time, it's, and money, and again, and death, and parables, in order to get the full of the fire doing things good. Will it take a process, we gotta, we gotta keep after it.
And at that meeting that we had with CDOT, I asked him pointedly, because at the, at the time, we were talking about crosswalks at the school. And of course, they danced around that issue and I finally said, uh, you might as well know that the word is, you won't do anything as CDOT until somebody gets killed. And they hemmed and hawed and finally they kind of agreed that that was their standard of necessity. If there's, if there's a death involved, then they certainly take a more serious look at it. But we're trying to prevent that.
You know, years ago at mile mark for six, that curve went the wrong way. We always banked the wrong way and we just had so many problems up there. They came in, fixed it. I think, I think you ought to be pushing for them to take that hill out, because no matter what they put up on a sign, people aren't gonna do it. But if you can see people coming, that's gonna make the difference. See, and when I stopped there, I rolled down my window because I can hear those rumble strips. But I'm not a state highway engineer, but I never seen rumble strips around a corner. Don't you think that the rumble strips should be closer?
So, I mean, the whole intersection is a, is a challenge. I mean, you have to understand the way the state highway department goes about making changes. And, uh, we can use a classic example we have right now, and that's right there in front of the school. And, and I don't know if you're, if you know or not, I mean, everybody probably is familiar with the little electronic signs at the town of West Cliff. They put the one up at the school. CDOT is having a meltdown over that sign. Because we told, we asked and asked for them to, to consider it. Not only did they say that they're not gonna consider it, they basically said, you were not gonna get a sign up there. And so we said, we're gonna back. So, we did that and now we've kind of let CDOT know, if you mess with the sign, then somebody's gonna get arrested for criminal mischief. And we'll, and we'll, we'll just harass your truck drivers and you're gonna be able to drive a state highway truck in front of the school without you getting stopped. Because we have to do something for our citizens and we had this discussion.
That sign has to be there.
Right, so, so going back though, the way they would do it, like a speed reduction, if you, if you propose a speed reduction. So the state comes in and they, they have to go out and do a two hour, they'll sit there for two hours and they set, and they don't tell us when they're coming because they don't want the, they don't want law enforcement to go out and slow people down. So what they do is they sit there and they do a radar test on every vehicle that comes down there. Then they use the eighty-fifth percentile of the average speed. So if everyone is going five miles an hour to the speed limit, you know what they do? They raise the speed on them.
What?
Doesn't matter that the speed limit's sixty-five, they raise it, yeah, that's, that's what they told us. So anytime they do a speed test, it, ninety percent of the time, the speed limit goes up, not down. And so, because their process isn't about safety, let's be honest, that's not, they don't care. And if they say they do, they are liars. And I've told them that in meetings before, they're irresponsible with the way they do it. I think we have to have a coordinated effort and it has to be about pressure. And I don't know that you, that you doing it will be near as impactful. Not that you can't drive it, but I think ultimately it's gotta come from the commission in a concerted effort with all of us working that way.
I agree, and if I got the statistics and I already got the Roden Bridge, in the month of August, one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven cars went to the landfill. Four hundred and forty pickups with trash, forty-two big trucks, and then forty-four trash trucks.
Jackie, there's a better way to do it though. I think Gary has, Gary has the equipment to do, uh, to do a counter.
Yeah.
And we just go out and put, and he puts out the, and we can count the number, because, but that's a good number. But you know as well as I do, that, that'll, that doesn't account for all the folks that can go in and out of proceedings, travel through there. I think we can make it even more effective.
This is the way I, I was gonna do it. I was gonna get the statistics of just going to landfill, just going to the sawmill, how many people live out in those subdivisions? That's how many people live out in those subdivisions. Then we can have a counter, we have an airport where the traffic's coming in. Uh, but we have Greenleaf Sawmill up there also. But I had asked many years ago, three or four, for some signs that says Custer County is zoned, permits are required. The gentleman told me that I was speaking with, said, no, you will not get those signs because they're not informational. And so then I said, well Fremont County has them, Park County has them. He said, once they fall down, they won't be put back up. And I said, send me the rules. He said, this is an unwritten rule.
But that, but, but CDOT uses that, that, that verbiage, they, I, I agree with you, but, but the problem is, see, is they have one or two people that basically get to make the rules up as they go. And like Jer- Jeremy is the guy, he's the guy that we dealt with, with the electronic signs. And he told me in the meeting, you're not gonna get that sign, I'm like, why not? And he's like, because we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, because it's an unwritten rule.
Why, why do you get to make the rules up?
But don't you think if we got, I'll get all the statistics and then I'll put them, I'll get, I'll, I'll do the, I'll do the work to get all the letters from the fire department, from the Roden Bridge, and because Roden Bridge is having a problem also. They go out there and, and east of the landfill, I mean west of the landfill, on the east side is their gravel pit. They, they're gravelling over on the west side, they gotta come up Schoolfield, stop at Degrees. There's no way that they can get that semi across that road when someone's coming, there's gonna be another one. Somebody's gonna hit one of our road gravel trucks. But if we did the lake.
Jackie and everybody, I think, uh, you made a very good point, it needs to be done. I think that we can get behind, try to have another good conference with them for whatever that might yield. But in the meantime, I don't know why we the county can't put a, a sign, why I need to say caution, I see an intersection ahead, proceed with, uh, you know, caution, caution. Whatever we, we can do to do, certainly can help slow down the signs.
Are you talking about on Schoolfield and Rosita Road?
Schoolfield and on Rosita Road.
Certainly we can't be doing stuff on the state highway right of ways.
But, but the state says, Bill, that they own that stop sign and they.
I understand, but let's go before that sign. Right. They can slow down, caution, if dangerous intersection, high speed, whatever we wanna do.
And that'll work out great, because I have a girl checking into a solar flashing sign. In Aurora.
The people that have to take long vehicles or heavy vehicles across the road or turn on that road, that will help because they can't see over that hill.
Correct.
Gotta get rid of that hill.
Yeah, it's not gonna solve all the problems.
It's not gonna solve, but we got a beginning and don't you think with newspaper coverage and Facebook, we can get this message out there and get a lot of people to sign, uh, something?
But what I would love to see is a concerted effort from the responsible parties in the county, all sign a, a letter stating three commissioners, the sheriff, the county attorney.
Correct, and not collecting them.
And anybody else, one letter with all of a signing, we demand action. They can't ignore it.
I agree.
And, and if we get Rich Smith to captain for, because I've talked to Rich, but he's frustrated with it too, much bigger than that one intersection. I mean, we talked about several of them. But he too is, he's reached out to find out what we can do. But he can pull up some statistics that can go back, because he has that state database which keeps records of that intersection. He can go back twenty years to see all of the accidents that occurred there. And so he, he would be a great asset for there as well, and I think he would work with us on it. He just has to be a little more neutral.
And I, I.
His employer.
I agree, it, it came to light, because it's a personal issue for me now, but still in the same sense, we got school bus, like you said, what if a school bus is turning on Rosita Road? And then what about the, and then what about the person doing the sixty-five mile an hour limit?
No, I think.
But, but, but hey, the last couple, the last couple accidents we've had there, people were going sixty-five, they were going fifty-five.
But how does that person feel for killing somebody?
No, but what I'm saying is, is that the speed isn't, it's not, so ultimately the speed isn't the issue, but it's not the issue, as Jackie said, it's that hill there. And, and I'm telling you, it is gonna take a lot of noise and a, and a really a dedicated concerted effort to get the state to do that, because that's a big project.
Okay, so.
Look what it took, look what it took at Copper Gulch on, on sixty-nine North. Right.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, they.
Right.
Right, and I thought about that as well, I'd like to move on, but, uh, that project did not include lowering the roadway. They just took out the berm, that is a whole different.
Okay.
That's correct.
But I don't mean to cut you short, Ms. Hobbie, we're gonna have to move on.
Okay, but the berm is owned by a private individual. So, if the private individual agrees to get shave off that berm.
Okay, all right, I think your point is certainly well made, I think we share the same concern.
Seriously, this is the kind of thing, I don't think about, I mean, I'm transgiving what happened out there, I agree that, but I never thought that, I didn't think about a semi truck, I didn't think about buses. We need to think about those contributions, right?
Thanks.
Good, thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Can you continue then on these efforts and at some point we'll formalize all of that into a letter to CDOT?
Uh, and, uh, newspapers getting out the word?
Okay.
Could you forward Mr. Tebow's, uh, email if you don't, if you don't mind?
Thanks.
I'll just, or you want to? I'll forward my emails, they can have the stuff.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Take it easy. Uh, yeah. Chair moves into recess for about three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes! I told Jackie. Yeah. Uh, call the meeting back to order, uh. I was gonna ask Mr. Byerly if he would like to, well, let's, let's press on. Uh, any unfinished business? Mr. Commissioner Kenda?
Negative.
Commissioner Prince? Nor do I. Uh, new business? I'd like to, to change the agenda a little bit and move Sheriff Byerly's, uh, agenda item up. Uh, I know we've got some discussion on economic, uh, strategic plan. Sheriff Byerly, would you like to, we're gonna move you up once, so I know you wanna be.
Sure, thanks. I appreciate that.
Good, good morning.
How are you?
Good, sir.
Mr. Kenda, how are you, sir?
Very good, thank you.
Floor's yours.
So you have a copy of the, um, contract to the town of West Cliff. Uh, it's exactly the same as last year, other than the dates of service moved from January one to December thirty-one of eighteen to nineteen. Uh, same, uh, it's, I mean, it's exactly the same, other than that.
Same money?
Same money, uh, everything for twenty nineteen. Um, I did, I did express, uh, when, I've already met with the town of West Cliff and they've signed it, um, and I believe I have, or I'm waiting for you to sign, and I will too. But, um, I've already expressed to them though that for twenty twenty, um, we're gonna have to sit down and, and discuss, uh, money wise, what that's gonna look like for twenty twenty and we can discuss that budget stuff now, I think this is the place to do it, but.
Uh, so you're comfortable with that document?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I don't have any reason not to be, because Clint's looked over it, I mean, he does it here.
Uh, Commissioner Kenda, any, well, we'll move forward. Uh, chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, contract between the town of Silver Cliff.
West Cliff.
Or West Cliff, sorry.
West Cliff.
And the board of county commissioners and the sheriff's office.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract, uh, between the town of West Cliff, county commissioners, sheriff's office. Discussion?
I have a question, Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I know that, uh, since in my own informal, uh, polling and looking, I see a lot more traffic that looks like this year coming down ninety-six.
Yeah.
The Bay Street, and a lot of traffic trying to get across sixty-nine old. Uh, seems to me you, your, 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 your number of hours spent by deputies and others to the entry question, you sure you, this is an adequate amount?
So, so. And that's, that's, that's a great, that's a great question, Bill. Um, so I, I do, I do quarterly reports to both West Cliff and Silver Cliff. And, and I break down the reports, that's not something that I've ever sent to commissioners. Obviously, Mr. Prince probably sees it, uh, because, uh, he's, uh, representing, uh, the towns in that capacity for the town meetings. But, um, on average, uh, the town of West Cliff does take up, uh, or we do have someone around the town of West Cliff more than, than any other time. But as far as resources go for calls for service, um, combined, the town of, uh, the two towns use up about forty-three percent of our resources. Uh, usually thirty to thirty-three percent for West Cliff and then around ten to twelve percent for Silver Cliff. Um, so again, that's a generalization, um.
Well, that's pretty significant.
It is?
So Shannon, that's not because, you know, one of my concerns, we talked before, just trying to get guys to slow down on the dirt roads where they're creating a lot of, uh, washboard and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
And then just have the prince show up once in a while, that'll help that, and it, it does take away from that cost of money, because we gotta pay more road grates money.
Right. No, no, I mean, your point's well taken, Bill, and so the, the challenge always comes down to, right? So, wh- what, what is there for a share, right? I mean, I know, uh, in twenty fourteen, uh, the year before I took office, there was a lot of discussion, um, between the towns and Sheriff Job. Um, I, and, and obviously I wasn't involved in those, but I, but I heard and saw the rumblings in the paper and all that about that the towns considering having their own law enforcement, uh, personnel to handle that. And so in, in twenty fifteen, I, I broke that down and, and took that to the towns and said, listen, you know, uh, in order to do that, you're talking, uh, just for a full-time employee, you're, you're talking about seventy-two thousand dollars a year by the time you give them benefits and all that. You won't find anybody, and that's paying the same that we pay. And everybody knows if you have one full-time employee, that means you have to have three in order to fully cover.
All shifts.
So, so now you're, you're talking, you know, you're already at two hundred and, you know, ten thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for, and that's no equipment. That's not paying for any dispatch services. So they, they quickly realized that wasn't reasonable. Well, so, so that's what I was thinking about for twenty twenty, because obviously this has gotta take planning. The, the challenge we have the budget, right, and so West Cliff, they request budget, you know, budget numbers from me six weeks before I even submit my budget numbers to, to the commission, to you. And then that's another month before we even start budget negotiation. So it's extr- and then, and then, and I'm just talking West Cliff, then we have Silver Cliff in yet, which we haven't done their contract. So, I mean, we're, we're talking this timing, it's extremely difficult to me, for me, because I.
So, how does that affect this year's contract, that sounds like it does, because it's too late, is that right?
Well, I mean, it's not too late, cause you could say, no, um, I want you to go back and negotiate with the towns, um, on their, and see if we can get more, you know, if we could, we could bump that out, you could, you could certainly do that, and I, and I mean, if that's what you would want, then I could go back to them and talk about it, um, but, but I do, I do think, and my plan was in the budget hearings, uh, coming up, uh, next month, that, uh, I was gonna talk to you guys, and we were to, to discuss about having to go to the towns, and I think it's, I think it's not gonna be popular, but I do think we're gonna have to talk about, I mean, them at least coming up to a point where they're funding at least one full-time position between the two towns, not, you know, not each, but, because collectively right now, um, we're not, but, you know, we're talking about forty-eight thousand dollars total between the two towns, which is, you know, a good eighteen thousand dollars less than, than it costs us for one full-time employee, not counting any equipment, just, just the employee, so I do think it's something that's gonna have to be considered.
As a point of information, I'm ready for our guest today, we're talking about this contract in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars paid quarterly typically, uh, then if I hear what you're saying, town of Silver Cliff, contract fifteen. Okay, good, further discussion? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Shannon, when you say forty-three percent of our resources, does that translate to forty-three percent of your budget?
Oh, gosh.
No.
That does sound like, that's about maybe five percent. No, it's not even five percent. Oh, I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, Jackie, I would have to look and see, it's very little, and it's come up, uh, most years, it didn't, it didn't come up this year, but it went up last year, and I, and I've tried to be fair to the, to the towns, because I also understand they're not swimming in revenue either. It's, it's one of those balancing acts and, and trying to, to work with the towns and yet, and yet be fair to the, to all citizens of the county.
What, what is the implication of delaying and letting us talk to the mayors of those towns before we, uh, commence this? Does it make sense that they, uh, I think they need to pay something in the next year, since now, is, is this contract going for nineteen?
Yes.
Yeah, it's from January to December nineteen.
Well, who knows what the one-way street on, on concept will be.
How will we handle the delay from, uh, Robert?
Well, we can certainly postpone this, no problem, uh, and, and ask Sheriff Byerly to go back to, uh, the town. If we're talking about the town, then I'm also assuming if he brings us a contract that was for the same amount for Silver Cliff, that we're probably gonna have the same opinion and attitude about that.
Yeah, I think it's thirty percent of the whole city.
I believe that Sheriff Byerly has quote-unquote put the town of West Cliff on notice, that is probably going to be different for twenty twenty.
And, and I would do the same with Silver Cliff, we just haven't had that meeting yet, but, but if you were, if you were to indicate that you wanted to delay this, you wanted me to go back to the towns, I would just immediately go to Silver Cliff without, and say, hey, listen, we have to talk about this.
I guess, Bill, uh, I hear what you're saying, um, I hate to put Sheriff Byerly on the spot, but I would, I would ask him, uh, it doesn't matter what we think they would respond to a, an increase to me necessarily right now, it would matter more to me, does Sheriff Byerly feel that it is that thirty-three thousand dollars is not an adequate amount for twenty nineteen? If he does not feel it's off, it's an adequate amount, then I'd say, we need to have further discussion.
Well, and that's okay, uh, the issue is economically, the county and safety-wise, this would be better, we need some help out on the county roads as well. And, you know, and, and even on the, uh, un, under-traveled roads, guys just go, you know, they slide around these, uh, washboards and slide off the road.
Right.
The basic issue is.
Yeah, so I would ask Mr. Byerly, do you feel like this is adequate for this year or not?
So, quite frankly, I haven't felt that it's been adequate, ever, but, but again, do I have to weigh what I, can the towns afford it, and, and I don't know, because I don't run their budget, I go to them and talk to them, and it's a negotiation.
Say again?
I'm sorry, I could have a hard time, I think, uh, I think that this guy, uh, is, is well worth it, does it matter, I mean, they drive the roads too.
I, I, I will say this, I did get a little bit of a feeling when, when I met with West Cliff, that they were surprised that it didn't go up at all this year. Um, in fact, uh, Ms. Glushki from the, the board even said, shocked if it hasn't gone up, so, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, because again, it's, it'll be an amicable conversation, I'm not gonna go in there slamming my, just demanding, I mean, you talk to, I can sit and talk with them, and we can, we can talk about it.
Okay, um, and I, I guess I'd like to have that conversation, what do you think that number would be like? Let's talk about a, a percent increase over this.
So, uh.
Ten, fifteen percent more than what we have now?
Well, I think if you do, you need less than ten percent, it's not.
Most point.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, um, I, I would need to go back and correct some numbers, to be honest with you, I don't want, I don't wanna give a number here, and then, you know, all of a sudden, everybody's like, oh, they're gonna ask for a twenty percent increase, and that's really not, or, or, or we can say ten, and then it ends up being fifteen, I don't wanna give a mixed message there.
Okay.
I think that maybe, I, I could put some numbers together, and then I could go in and sit down with them, and I think it, you know, it won't be necessarily what I propose, and we'll come to a an agreement, and then, and then I can float that to you, gentlemen, before I say yes or no to the town as well, if you would, if you would like.
Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're heading to a, I, I think that's a good plan, uh, are there ways, have you mentioned buying one more, uh, head, body to, to hire, another guy, that's, that would cost forty thousand, uh, whatever it was.
Seventy-two is what Donna Hobby tells me.
Yeah, and, uh, the question is, if you get ten percent, and it's only, you know, forty thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, are there ways you could, you could increase support, uh, safety in town with, you know, five, ten thousand bucks, or, or does it require hiring an extra guy? Like, like technology, there's something that you got, like?
No, no, Bill, I don't, I, um, it's, it's all about presence, at that point, it's about having people out that are visible and, and out there, and.
It's really not about the percentage, man, it's really, you're, you're looking for an increase of at least one guy.
I, I don't put those words in my mouth, no, 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 you brought that up, I didn't bring that up.
It's the board's pleasure, certainly the motion to postpone is, uh, appropriate, and if that were to happen, then we need to talk about the timing of when we have this conversation again. I don't know when the board, town board, when the, again, the meeting was then.
I can, so, I mean, they have a town board meeting on, and Mr. Prince can, it's the first Tuesday, I just have to find the date, so, a Tuesday, so West Cliff is the second, and Silver Cliff is the first, and I, did we?
And, uh, budget hearing start the ninth.
The ninth, is, am I on the ninth?
I, I don't do that, Donna does that schedule.
Yeah, that's.
So, it could work, you could get.
I would move that we postponed it, uh, at least, uh, so that gives Shannon a chance to deal with, with the, with the mall.
Okay, uh, I'll second the motion, uh, it's been moved and seconded to postpone signing, approving the contract with the town of West Cliff, the Sheriff's Department, the county. Uh, we really need to either postpone this definitely or indefinitely, I'm assuming you wanna postpone it definitely to our next commissioner meeting, uh, or the budget hearings, probably.
To the budget hearings, and.
When is our?
Your meeting is before the second.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second, the third, yeah.
Yeah, so, if, Bill, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if we wanna postpone this definitely, uh, I would ask that you include either October the second or October the third, which are B O C C views.
The third will allow.
October the third.
It would have to be the third.
Okay, October the third? Is that good? Okay, so, let me rephrase, it, it has been moved and seconded to postpone this item until October the third, discussion on postponement?
How is that gonna affect the West Cliff, and, and I, and I don't know if you can put on your other hat now, Jake, so.
About their budget process.
Is it gonna negatively impact their budget process, cause I know they're in the process of that as well.
Yeah, they're, they're heavily into it right now, um, but, um, they're flexible enough to talk about this.
A- and I know they are, I mean, they're, they're great to work with, I just didn't know, I mean, I don't wanna mess up their timing too, cause I know everyone's trying to get their ducks.
I think if we get to them within the next day or two, the town.
I'll send Kathy an email today.
Uh, what you wanna do, uh, I, I think if they had to, they could call a special meeting if they needed to, um, I don't think you're gonna have a tremendous amount of opposition.
Okay.
Okay, good. Uh, yes, sir. When you mentioned the thirty-three thousand, was that a year?
Yes.
That's all? Yes, for the town of West Cliff, for their policing.
Really?
And, and John, uh, Mr. Spur, I'm sorry, in the meeting, I, um, your, your reply, your reply right there is exactly what all the other sheriffs look like when I, when we discuss about, I mean, we, most towns the size of West Cliff, um, their, their contribution is in the six figures.
Yeah.
For most sheriffs, according to that, so, and, but I also know the West Cliff, but that's right, but I also know the town of West Cliff can't afford that, and that's why, that is that balancing act, because like, it can't be a, a burden to them, because what if they say, well, then we're not gonna pay anything, well, we're gonna end up having to, it's.
Anyway.
Or, yeah, right, I mean, it's a, yes.
Further public comment? Further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing them will vote on the motion to postpone it till October third, go ahead.
If I may, before you. Um, I just want to get for the, for the public record, I had a very strong hand, and I think I wrote this, it looks like what I wrote, um, there were no changes this year, so I just looked at it, in passing, they said to me, you know, we're just changing dates, do you need to look at, I told them, I need to look at, you're just doing that, um, I just wanted for the record to know that, on my other hat, I've, I've been involved in this also.
Good, alright, uh, call for the question on the motion to postpone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jose, who from Carys, well, I know the business concerning the contract with town of West Cliff, postponed until October the third, ma'am, thank you, thank you, sir.
Just so you know, so I'll reach out, uh, Kathy Rice today and let her know that we need to talk about it, I don't think I can get her numbers today, though.
No.
So that she can start on it, cause I'm gonna have to go back and, you know, do some correction on that.
Alright.
Just as a side note, too, the, the urinal removal in there has made that environment.
Much more calm.
It's indescribable, it's so much better.
You can line up out the door.
You can actually breathe in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Can the paper quote you on that?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir, see ya, have a great weekend.
Thanks, you too, and I'll, I'll be in touch via email, just letting you know we're, we're standing with the towns.
A wide decision to decline.
I am gonna go back right now.
Okay, I'll wait about ten minutes.
Let's not put that on the record either, alright, um, contract services for economic strategic plan and implementation, known as the Ready Grant. Uh, it's the next item of business, uh, I don't anticipate an action item here, but we'll see how things go. Commissioner Kanda?
Sure, there should be, uh, an act of this year's status, and, uh, and, uh, they progress pretty well, I've met with Cheryl Trent, the contractor that actually was hired, to conduct the strategic plan from Custer County, uh, when we got it, we looked and decided that it needed more work, uh, we needed to include, uh, a better broad spectrum of people. We think they're active, there is a, a executive committee, uh, that is set up for a guidance committee, uh, in order to, um, oversee the process, they call it a steering committee. That included, uh, the commissioners, the town mayors, special districts, that included, uh, the school district, uh, the fire, uh, district, and, uh, roundhouse, uh, as well as the library district, uh, then they had a couple others that I had questions, we can talk about that at some point, then, that includes the Fremont, uh, school district RE two, and the ride fire for Dexter District, uh, which could be combined. But, uh, the steering committee is not limited, and that's about, uh, these, uh, people, ten people, and we can include or take others off, that needs to be looked at a little bit more. The other, uh, group that was identified, it's one of these fifteen people to be interviewed, uh, and, uh, this is to discuss, uh, this as well. That could be fifteen separate people, it could include a couple of people that are already on the steering committee, et cetera, so that has to be revised again, and, uh, I intend to send, uh, the list out to, uh, to Jay, you, and, uh, Tom, and, uh, let's, uh, probably in the next meeting, uh, get together and decide, uh, what we can do with that, we, we have plenty of time, uh, to grant, and, and and, and it's a year-long grant, we've gotta get started on it, and we need pretty fast the schedule, and they also include a survey that goes out to, uh, the world, the county citizens. Okay, and there's some issues with that, it's pretty weak, and so we wanna kind of work that over as well, and we probably ought to get the, uh, steering committee guys to help do that, and so that will take, uh, a little bit of time, and this is good news, because, uh, Cheryl, or, uh, Trent, had recommended that we start this after the first of the year, gives us time to, uh, publicize the fact that we have a strategic plan, and, and, from Custer County, and, and the goals before that, and it gives us time to, uh, put the survey out to where it gets to everybody meaningfully, not just in a quick, well, you got a week to do it, give us your input, type of thing, and so, uh, plenty of time to, to work that. The recommended schedule therefore is from seven January through the second of April, execute the process, uh, and that will result in a strategic plan and a report that's published, uh, in April, uh, the second of April, actually. So, uh, that's where we are right now, uh, we're allowed for the surveys to be publicized, strategic plans, projects to be publicized, break by and, uh, people, and we gotta make sure that, uh, that people have an interested interest in sharing this, there's several workshops that are scheduled in the schedule as well, I'll send you the new schedule, uh, you, uh, from, and you, Jay, and then, uh, what I'd like to do is send it, uh, to the, uh, the, uh, as soon as we nail down exactly who the steering committee ought to be, uh, to each one of those questions.
Okay, um, I've got some concerns about this Ready Grant, uh, the strategic planning process, number one, uh, my biggest concern is that survey's already been published and sent out via Monkey Survey, uh, advertised off of a, uh, Facebook page, so Economic Development Company is certainly doing their own thing with this Ready Grant, that's already been in the process, I'm not thrilled about that.
And that is a concern, for sure, Cheryl. I think you've already sent a name and pulled it back on.
Yeah, you might follow up on that, uh, for the record, the grant was for twenty-nine thousand, the county match was four thousand five hundred, uh, for a total cost of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. I've looked at the Monkey Survey, uh, certainly had no input as county commissioners as to what that survey was gonna look like, to me, this is a little different ballgame, because we do have money on the line here, it's not a services grant, we have expended dollars from the county, and I believe.
Exactly right, it's our, our program that we've got.
Correct, so, uh, I have no idea what response has been had on the Monkey Survey to this point, but I'm assuming with your conversations, uh, with our. But I'm assuming with your conversations with our grant contact that you will follow up and let her know that that survey's already been put out there.
Yeah, yeah, she knows that. I'll get her to find out. I'll find out whether anybody replied to it yet. I doubt it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know who those results were going to, whether it was going to the Economic Development Company or it was going to Cheryl Trent. I don't... I'd be interested in knowing that.
Probably both.
Yeah. So... Okay, very good, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Prince?
I appreciate you telling me on this.
Yeah, thanks for your work on that, Bill. Nice to divide and divide some of those responsibilities up. Absolutely. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next item of business is the tower lease agreement for the tenants on Lookout Tower. I asked Ms. Brenda to put this on the agenda more as an informational item. Obviously, the county has taken over ownership of the tower on Lookout Mountain. I think we have four or five, we'll call them tenants or subscribers, on that tower. I spoke with Sangre de Cristo Electric. They were not charging any of those tenants to be on those towers. I called originally to ask them about how we transfer the billing of that, and he said, well, there really wasn't any. The only billing had to do with the B L M lease that was split two ways. Now I believe we need to look at that and decide how we're gonna proceed with that. And I also think we need to proceed on reaching out to our tenants if we so decide to start charging them or not. We just need to communicate with those tenants and let them know that the change of ownership has occurred and go forward from there.
Bill, what are you looking for now?
Well, I... Discussion mostly. Personally, I feel like we do need to charge them something to be on that tower.
I agree, in order to be consistent, because if we end up building another tower and charging people, we cannot not build.
Okay. Commissioner Prince, your thoughts?
I agree. We need to charge something, even if it's the minimum, but more importantly, I think we need to make sure we have some kind of release of liability for using the towers.
Okay. Yeah. I've got the contracts, of course, from Sangre de Cristo Electric that we can look at as kind of template. Share those with Attorney Smith with your gentleman's consent. I will try to move forward on that, if that's okay. And try to get that going, hopefully have it in place for January one.
Yeah, we gotta understand that if the tower breaks, we fix it.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we know who's gonna fix it.
I know, man.
How we gonna pay for it could be another question, yeah. So I will move forward with that, try to draft up a contract for the existing tenants. I believe those would be C-Com, Hilltop, and Chafee Communications. And I also believe and would recommend to the commission that we split the B L M three ways. Maybe not in the same contract, but we look at philosophically splitting it three ways instead of two ways with Chafee Communications coming on board.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right.
How much is the B L M?
Do you know, Bill, what the B L M lease was? Forty-five hundred a year?
Uh, less than that. I think it was around thirty-five hundred.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know either right off. I'd have to do a little research on that, so... Good. If we're good with that, then I will move forward in that direction and certainly will not make any decisions, but forward you documents and stuff as they come along. And then we'll put on a subsequent agenda and decide what we want to do. Good. We'll move on then. Discussion of the start date of Hermit Bridge. I know, Bill, you have had conversations with Gary Hyde, our supervisor, as have I. The Hermit Bridge replacement project was slated to begin September twenty-fourth. Gary Hyde is basically decided that he needs to push that out a week to October the first. The Dola Grant is paying for forty percent of that grant. Is that correct? Forty? Sixty-fourty, right?
Yeah, something like that.
So forty percent of that grant, one of the requirements was that project started by October first, no later than October one. So we will still fall within the requirements of that grant. And Mr. Hyde indicated that that would give him a little more leeway to get the head walls assembled and put on that covert. If you haven't seen it, it's... The covert itself is basically complete down there in the yard. They need to put the head walls and the wing walls on it. So he thought that would give him an additional week to do that. We had a request from the art community to postpone that as well. I think this would honor that and give Mr. Hyde time to finish the prep on that.
On that, Bill, I wanna make sure everybody understands that... This is the good thing, that it does accommodate that request. However, it's not that request that drove it. Gary, as we all do, we look at the issues and we look at the impacts of any action. Make sure you balance that, try to accommodate as much as you can.
Right.
If this happens, that a couple other things came up that caused... It's not that they couldn't have started on the twenty-fourth, but it does give them a better chance of succeeding, getting it in on schedule a little easier. So I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, your point's well taken. As I understood it, Commissioner Canada, there was one activity on that during that week that would be conducted in a business on Hermit Road in the county. The other are activities I believe were gonna occur in town, so...
That's right.
But, you know, hopefully we can get this started on October one, finish it on schedule, which now I believe is October twenty-two. And for your information, Mr. Hyde has changed the dates on those signs, east and west of Hermit Bridge, to indicate the start date, October one.
Right, and then all those, you gotta consider the airport, Calhoun Airport, does then package, but it's not significant.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, anything else? Commissioner Prince, you okay on the Great Project?
Okay, I told them I felt we probably were gonna ruin it, and they were very appreciative of us, too.
Good. Okay, any other new business, gentlemen? We'll move into public comment? Yes, sir?
I have a poll comment.
Yep.
When he built it, redid this building, some very generous individual brought a reel of cable in here to cable his building. I offered it to him when he wanted to build the building, but he didn't take it. So I got it sent to my garage. I think the IT could probably use this beautiful cable.
Okay.
Two, three hundred feet of it.
Okay.
If somebody come and pick it up and they carry it up to the IT. And I imagine he'd use it on the installations up there that you were doing.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Otherwise, just put some dust in my garage.
Is that... Is it in your way?
No, in my way.
Like I say, if it's an issue...
I'll just kick it out of the way.
We could try to get it today. I happen to have my pickup, but if not...
Pickup, I have the ID.
Ladies, you okay with that? Because I got two high-level passengers with me today.
Because I can't pick up anything anymore, so...
Yeah. Is it... I wouldn't assume if one person could lift it up.
I can lift it, apparently, but...
Wouldn't tolerate that. Maybe we can coordinate that after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Other public comment? I have a... It's weird that the commissioners now are getting into the public comment thing, but I don't know where else I would bring this up. We had talked about trying to do something with the front of this building. Allyn told me at the break that he had a bid on, I guess, skimcoating that. Not stucco, but another concrete skimcoat. So I asked him to forward that on to us. Originally, my thought was to try to figure out how to finance maybe putting a rock, cultured rock, or natural rock stone, or a mural, or whatever. We had that discussion down here one time. We haven't really moved forward on that. My problem with painting that is then if we ever do want to do anything else, that paint is probably gonna have to be taken off of there before that. If we stucco it or rock it, whatever. So I'm a little hesitant about that, lest we go all in on painting and say, this is all we're ever gonna do is paint it. I don't know. So I don't know if you guys had a conversation about that down here?
I do know that Ruth Roper is working with somebody in Quavo that she knows that has some sort of rock or something that she wants to put tile or something to put in there. And I don't know what status she is with that. I know it hasn't been forgotten, but she is.
Yeah, we're probably getting to the time of the year now that it will not be forgotten, but it may be postponed.
Yeah, it sells the price.
Okay, good. Other public comment? No need for an executive session, I don't believe, gentlemen? Sheriff would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll second. They moved to second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned, eleven oh four.